So, welcome to the Marshfield Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for November 22nd, 2022. This is a hybrid meeting, so if you're dialing in on a phone, please use star six to mute and unmute yourself. Do we have the Elks guys here? We're going to take them first, and then Carmody next.
Brian, please do attend.
Oh, Grover, you out there? Hold on, Grover. You there? Okay, good. So, just say you're here. We're taking attendance. Larry Keane?
Larry Keane here.
Brian Murphy here.
Brian Sullivan here. Good evening. Brian Murphy has asked me to assist with the continued hearing for the Marshfield Lodge of Elks, Chapter 2494. This is a continued hearing for site plan approval in accordance with Section 305, 12.02 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to install a vertical wheelchair lift with a 36-foot-by-54-inch platform, tower height of 255 inches, and travel height of 148 inches to go from the first floor to the second floor for the property located at 1321 Ocean Ave. Since the last hearing, Grady Consulting has submitted a raft of plans, excuse me, Rockwood Design, forgive me, Rockwood Design has submitted a bunch of plans showing what is proposed. And for the applicant this evening?
Kevin Catwell.
Hi, Kevin. What would you like to say about this?
Also, we have a site plan for you, Brian Taylor. We had Brian Taylor draw our site plan for us. We were missing that last time, as well as the plans that Rockwood has submitted.
And it shows that there's no encroachment into the setback area?
Correct.
Is anybody on the board have any questions?
I'm good with this. This looks great.
Andrew, do you have any questions? Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Anything they would like to say or submit?
Sorry, I couldn't find the unmute. No, I'm good with the plan. This should be fine for a building permit and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to close the hearing?
Larry Keane, second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Corvancea.
Thank you. And I move that we grant the applicant's site plan approval/special permit in accordance with 305.1202 of the Marshfield Municipal Code, in accordance with the plans from Rockwood Design dated 10/25/22. 10/20/2022. And the, what's the date, the other date of the other plan? I don't have that. Site plan. What's the date of the site plan? The site plan. Put my glasses on so I can see. It looks like they just penned.
It's 11/10/22. They have rear lift and the 18-foot stair addition right here by Rick Savan.
Thank you. All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Steve Feeney, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Corvancea, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's a lot of money just to get Murphy up and down, isn't it?
The next hearing I'd like to move forward to is a special permit application for 1329 Ferry Street. The hearing 22-109, Robert Carmody, petitioner seeking a special permit in accordance with 305.102 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to construct a 12-foot-by-16-foot two-story addition with foundation and additional space above the half-bath slash laundry room on the property located at 1329 Ferry Street. Representing the applicant this evening is Mr. Carmody. Carmody, forgive me. What is it you want to do?
So, the addition will be within the setbacks on the back left-hand side of the house. It'll be, the basement will be into the existing basement, so it'll be a continuation, and then expand the living room on the first floor and another space above that, which will be, end up being the master bedroom.
And as I understand, this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure?
Pre-existing, non-conforming lot and a non-conforming structure on the right-hand side with the side yard setback.
And there is no intensification of that encroachment? It's, the addition is on the left-hand side, correct?
That's correct. Yep. It's to the back and the left-hand side, within the required setback.
Does anybody on the board have any questions about this? Comments?
Nope.
Anyone on the public like to speak to this? I move that we close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Steve Feeney, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye? Thank you. Sorry, Grover.
Yeah, I think I had objected, but I think they've submitted a site plan, so ready to deny whatever you'd like.
I think, I think this was the one that you were referencing.
Yeah.
They submitted this one as well, and it was kind of an older.
I couldn't, I couldn't tell what was going on.
Yeah.
Under 305, 1012, we need to find that all of the following conditions are fulfilled. And this board is familiar with those 10 conditions, but they are posted on the screen for your edification. And I move that we find that it meets all of those 10 criteria.
Second.
I agree.
And I move that we grant the applicant the special permit that they seek in accordance with 305, 1012. Second. All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Steve Feeney, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Corvancea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmody.
Good luck.
Next up, we have Brian Murphy. The next application on the agenda is for Dog Lane. The applicant has requested a continuance to December. And I believe the date is
December 13th.
December 13th.
Brian, can you just get that into the record?
Yeah, just open, open the hearing.
B1222-110, Elizabeth Barrett, trustee. The petitioner is seeking a variance in accordance with 305-10.11 for relief from 305-6.02, table of dimensional and density regulations to facilitate the construction of a single-family dwelling on the property located at 20 Dog Lane, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being parcel G160206 and is located in the R1 zoning district. I make a motion to continue to December 13th.
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Steve Feeney, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Corvancea.
Thank you. All right, now. Now, we're on to 22-111, Waldeweisman. The petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with 305-1012 and 305-902 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to raise the existing residential structure and replace it with a new 42-foot-by-27-foot-six two-story dwelling on a pile foundation on the property located at 10 Marion Street, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel M050573 and is located in the R3 zoning district. Name and address for the record?
Yep. John Zimmer, 61 Meeting House Lane, Marshfield, on behalf of Mr. Eastman. This is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot with respect to side setbacks. Mr. Eastman is looking to raise and rebuild the existing structure. The proposed, it's a modular home. It'll be going up on piles. It will not be any closer to the sidelines than the existing structure. It'll be about six feet closer to Marion Street, but still respecting the 15-foot setback. We have already been through conservation. They have issued an order of conditions with the project. The piles will raise the house above the flood elevation. There'll be no living space under the flood elevation and no utilities under the base flood elevation.
All right. Any questions from the board?
No.
Where is the house constructed?
Where is it?
Yeah, it's, it's a prefab house, right?
Right, I don't know exactly where it is. I mean, these modular houses are constructed somewhere. They're brought in on flatbeds, basically, and then assembled on-site.
This one looks like Pennsylvania. Durabilt, Pennsylvania.
Okay.
Do they, because it's going to be elevated, does it have to comply with, like, I don't know, the wind code? I forget the, like, is it in a velocity zone?
No, it's, it's in an AE zone.
Okay. That was my only question.
If I can, I'll answer some of those structural questions for you. Brian, we do live in a high-wind area, but all of the, especially all manufactured and modular homes go through a pretty strict state process. And they're, they have to be designed specifically for the locality. Those wind loads and other loads that are, that is specific to that municipality. So, anything that's issued for permit or built for a permit in Marshfield will be specifically designed to handle Marshfield's wind load.
Thank you.
And that will be certified by the state.
Do I have anything?
No issues here.
Anything from the audience? Anything from the online audience? Seeing that there are none, I make a motion that we close 2211-10 Marion Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Corvancea.
Andrew, should we put up the 1 to 10 stating that we agree with the special permit? Everyone agree with the special permit conditions?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so I move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's request for a special permit. Subject to the conditions, this project will require a building permit, a foundation and deck slash porch plan stamped by a registered design professional, a full elevation certificate, a final ASB build, a non-conversion agreement, and a certificate of occupancy. I don't think we need any other conditions. And based on the finding that the proposed reconstruction work as per plan last revised, 10322, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming home at 10 Marion Street, and based on the finding that the applicant has demonstrated that they meet all the other requirements in the Section 1012 of the bylaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Corvancea.
Thank you. All right, do we have Pamela Taylor here?
She is on Zoom.
Okay. The petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with 305902 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to construct an 11-foot-three-by-11-foot-six addition to the existing non-conforming dwelling on the property located at 119R Pleasant Street, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel F160402 and is located in R1 zoning district.
Hello, I'm Dick Rockwood here to represent Pamela Taylor. I did the architectural work for this project. It is a one-story addition. I believe that the rear of the house is the non-conforming dimension. So, our addition is the little red area, and we're 29 feet in the rear instead of is this, what zone are we in here?
30. Oh, that's R1.
R1.
It's R1, so it's supposed to be 40. So, we're only 29 feet, which is the reason that we are here. And we meet all the other setbacks. There was already a garage at that area and sort of a concrete patio also. So, we filled it in with a little one-story room, with a little breakfast room. That's space right there.
Any questions from the board? Any, any question? Andrew, will, will you guys have anything?
No issues.
No, no.
Anything from the public? Public online? Seeing that there's none, I move to close 22-112 Pamela Taylor, 119R Pleasant Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Corvancea.
All right. And so, I move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's request for a special permit. Subject to the conditions, this project will require a building permit, a final ASB build, and a certificate of occupancy. Based on the finding that the proposed reconstruction work as per plan last revised, 93022, will not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming home at 119R
Pleasant Street. Pleasant.
Pleasant Street. And based on the finding that the applicant has demonstrated that she meets all of the other requirements in Section 1012 of the bylaws. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Corvancea.
Thank you. Thank you. And now, we're on to E. McDonald's, 22-113. McDonald's Corporation, the petitioner is seeking a site plan waiver or site plan approval. If the waiver is not granted in accordance with 3051202 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to approve interior and exterior renovations that have already been completed, including restroom upgrade, dining room decor, seating renovations, installation of a new front counter, installation of a self-order kiosk, upgrades to the exterior finishes, updates to the ADA compliance, and updated to the drive-through equipment on property located at 2121 Ocean Street, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel G080401 and is located in the B2 zoning district. Name and address for the record.
David Connolly, 28 State Street, Boston, Mass. Hank Leon and I have Eric DeWrolfe from Bowler Engineering with me.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Members of the board, we're here to respectfully request a waiver of the site plan approval. As was detailed in our application, we applied in good faith for the building permit with the plans that were done, obtained a building permit, built in accordance with the building permit. And after the construction was done, we're informed two ways. One, at a hearing that the operator had requesting a variance for a sign, which was denied, which we're not looking to open at all. That there was a discussion by members of the board and by the building commissioner concerning the site plan review. That's when they found out about it and then talked to us. We've had some discussions going back and forth and are here to request the approval of the board for a waiver of the site plan approval. The work as detailed in the application was not substantial in terms of the site itself and what was done, and was done for some of the exterior, for the drive-up signage for handicap accessibility. And we therefore would respectfully request that the board consider a waiver to this. Or in lieu, we filed in the alternative for a site plan approval from the board for the work which has already been completed.
I've already been to the site, visited myself. Andrew, you've, you're okay. You've already reviewed everything there?
Yeah, I've reviewed everything. Everything was in performance. The only issue, you know, that we ever had was the, the sign, and that was solved.
Right, we addressed it.
The only issue was the ZDA requested site plan approval, and it's been honestly a battle for a year to get them before the board for a year. That's the only issue.
Okay. Bob, you're?
Yeah, I have no issue. I think the board should grant the site plan approval.
I agree.
Rather than waive it, because, you know, from time to time, some of the franchises that we have refresh their stores. And I don't think there's a single issue with any aspect of the site plan, but sometimes we've had, like, I remember with respect to the Wendy's, the board had some concerns about some site design changes that were made, and they actually modified.
Yes.
Now, the McDonald's wasn't as radical a change. It's more refreshing, so.
I agree.
But I think you should grant the site plan approval instead of waiving it.
I'm in agreement. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the live audience? Seeing that there's none, I'll make a motion that we close 22-113 McDonald's Corporation, 2121 Ocean Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
And I'll make a motion that, well, I move that the board grant the petitioner's request for site plan approval. Do we have the date? Andrew, can you read the date on that plan? Since my, someone that has been.
12/27/2018?
12/20.
That's correct.
Yeah, planned dated 12/27/2018. Based on the finding that the applicant has demonstrated that the, its existing work meets all the requirements of Section 1202 of the bylaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Corvancea.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
22-114 Stephen and Kristen Hergit. Is that you, Dick?
Yep.
The petitioner is seeking a permit in accordance with 3051012, 3051301 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to construct an 11-foot-by-25-foot-10 second-floor rear addition and an 8-foot-by-28-foot-2-covered front farmer's porch on the property located at 36 Musket Road, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being parcel K090311 and is located in the R3 zoning district.
I'm Dick Rockwood. I'm here to represent the Hergits. I did the architectural work for their second-story addition. The house was non-conforming. I believe on the sides. I don't have my, this was our 2-zone, I believe.
On the sides.
Right. Both sides. Right. So, we're not getting any closer than our existing setbacks, our existing non-conforming setbacks. And we're, we are extending out with an overhang over the rear of the house, but it's a one-story addition. I believe Andrew has the architectural plans.
Dick, did you, you have to go in front of the Concom for this?
No, I'm not putting a hole in the ground, so I didn't have to.
Is it cantilevered?
Yeah, just a cantilever. There it is, right there.
You do, man. This is a
Do I?
You put footings in.
Oh, we added the porch, yes.
So, this need, this did need a floodplain permit for that, and it needs confirmation approval.
Yes, it does. I think, I hope that's in the works. The porch was not in the initial discussion, so I'll check on that. But I won't have a problem with the conservation. And I believe, I'm not sure where I am with the flood elevation on the first floor, Andrew, but I don't think there was any issue. I don't have that info with me right now, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's, again, that's why we need a floodplain permit application, so we can kind of go through all that stuff, check to see if the house is currently in compliance, if it's going to be a substantial improvement, all that stuff.
So, inasmuch as you need that approval, are you prematurely in front of us?
It's usually the other way around. Conservation wants us to go to zoning before they end up making a decision, in case the footprint changes.
There's no, like, set agenda other than he does have to have an application into zoning before he applies for conservation. But the way, if it's in a flood zone, we would like them to start with a floodplain permit, and then that kind of triggers everything else. But it's not like he's doing anything out of order by being here tonight.
So, Andrew, according to this site plan, am I in the inland wetland district?
The property is, but the house is locked.
But the project isn't, right?
The project is not, no.
No. But the property's in the inland.
Oh, it's going, I see the arrows. Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't focusing on the arrow. I haven't looked at this in a couple of months. That's why, I'm sorry.
It's this, this line right here.
But am I in a flood zone?
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, I am.
Entire property is in an AE9 flood zone. All of Musket Road and Taff Road, that's all a flood zone.
But if I'm not putting a hole in the ground, I'm going over my existing, do I have to go to conservation? I'm within the 100-foot buffer.
You're adding a new porch, and you're adding this porch, and you're adding footings for that.
The porch is outside of the 100.
That's just for maintenance.
Oh, but because it's in the flood zone, okay. I know I, a long time ago, I focused on the 100-foot buffer with the porch. All right, and it might actually be, there might be an application in for it, I just am out of touch.
Well, like I said, Dick, the best thing is to do the flood zone, the floodplain application, and then that keeps track of everything and makes sure that you know what you have and you don't have, what you need and you don't need.
Right. If you haven't seen this one yet, I have about a dozen of them in the office. This one slipped through the cracks on doing the, that, your application there, so we'll get that done.
But like I, like I said in my comments, the actual expansion of footprint or anything that he's doing shouldn't matter for what you're doing, what he's asking for, the relief he's asking for. If it is a substantial improvement, or if anything else is decided after this meeting, obviously they'd have to come back for a modification, but what he's asking for tonight, there's no reason to deny it based on the fact that he doesn't have a floodplain permit application there.
And we don't have to address the inland wetlands because it doesn't trigger that.
Right. I think you still need the findings, so.
It's an existing structure, and the existing structure is outside of the inland wetlands district.
But Andrew, doesn't he still need the findings? Wouldn't it be better if the board just granted him the permit?
Yes. It'd be better to have the findings than to not have the findings.
Right.
All right, so we'll move, we'll give him the special permit.
I mean, he's not doing anything that, he's not doing anything that hurts the interests of the inland wetland district.
Right.
I think it would benefit you to have the permit if it's not a problem to the board to grant it.
I don't see any problem with it. All right, is everyone good? Andrew?
Yes.
Anyone have any questions in the room or online? Seeing that there's none, I'll move that we close 22-114, 36 Musket Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Steve Feeny, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Oh, we have five anyway, so. So now, we'll, we'll start with the inland, the inland wetland district. I move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's request for a special permit, subject to the conditions, there really isn't any, to alter and extend a non-conforming residential structure in the inland wetland district, based on the finding that the applicant has demonstrated that he or she meets all the requirements of the Section 1301.1 F4 of the bylaw.
And the only condition you have to impose there is that they file an as-built plan when they're done.
All right, so the project will require a final as-built on this, on the inland wetland.
Yep, that's all that's required.
I agree, it meets all those conditions.
So, we agree, the inland wetlands, everyone up there? Good?
I do.
All right. So, all those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Steve Feeny, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Over.
Reverend's aye.
Now, we'll move on to the special.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we heard you. Now, we'll go on to the special permit. I move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's request for a special permit, subject to the conditions, this project will require a floodplain permit, building permit, final as-built, and certificate of occupancy. Based on the finding that all, that the proposed reconstruction work as per plan, last revised 9/30/22, will not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood, and the existing non-conforming home at 36 Musket Road, and based on the finding that the applicant has demonstrated that they meet all the requirements of Section 1012 of the bylaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Steve Feeny, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Reverend's aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Do you have any more information on that?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you.
So now, we have 22-115, 747 Ocean Street.
Oh, thanks, good.
You have two of them, Dick. Is anyone here for that?
I am.
Who?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Laura Kiefer.
Yeah, name and.
Hi, good evening.
Well, hold on, I got to read you in. So, this, this project is located in the R3 district and A-E9 SFHA and Barrier Beach Coastal Wetlands Resource Area. This property, property is not located in the inland wetlands. This project has a current floodplain permit application under FP2271. In order to avoid substantial improvement determination, the building permit for this project may, may not be applied for until November 20, November 2nd. Is that supposed to say 2022?
23.
Oh.
Brian, can you also read it into the record?
You didn't read the notice of the meeting, the beginning.
Oh. This project will, oh, you know what?
On the agenda.
All right, so we have, as I read Andrew's notes, the petitioner is seeking a special accordance in accordance with 3051012 of the Marshfield Municipal Code, to construct a 17-foot-four-by-13 unenclosed carport with a 2-foot eve and a 16-foot-by-16-foot open deck on the property located in 747 Ocean Street. Identified on the assessor's map as L091017 is located in the R3 zoning district. Go ahead, name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, I'm Laura Kiefer, 747 Ocean Street, Marshfield. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so, it's just what the application says. It's similar to the other agenda items before you. We are in a pre-existing, non-conforming act. We have submitted a floodplain permit application, and as mentioned, we cannot actually apply for the building permit until next November. We have a lot of work to do between now and then, including going before the Wetlands Commission, because we do have watering wetlands, which I don't anticipate any problem with. We are in a 50-to-75-foot buffer zone. It's an enclosed deck, and it's the, we have a little sketch of the carport that we included in the materials, so basically a roof with two posts, and we meet all these setback requirements.
Andrew, do you have anything to add?
Nope, this is, like I said, like she said, she filed a floodplain permit. She's waiting on actually filing for a building permit. She's seeking all the appropriate approvals first, because they did recently make an addition to the house and are, you know, making, they used improvements over the course of numerous years in order to not have to do a full renovation of the existing pre-plant structure.
Okay.
Bobby? I don't have any issues. I, when I had this, I couldn't read the plan, but the plan that you have in front of you now is a lot easier to read. I couldn't tell.
Okay.
The setbacks on it, but I can see them on that plan.
Right.
Okay.
Any questions from the board? Questions from the audience?
We do have someone.
What's that?
People down on the other side.
Questions from the audience?
Good evening, sir. My name is Michael Kylie, 747, 743 Ocean Street, direct to the south side of the petitioner.
Go ahead.
We're currently engaged in what I would say would be a land dispute. The petitioner has suggested taking, just give a notice that it's a property dispute, a property owned on the south side, that some of our property and a portion of our house is on their property. I've retained counsel, counsel has reached out to them, certified letter, email, and several other issues relating to this, this land dispute. Obviously, we disagree with the petitioner on that, due various channels we're taking that on now, but as of an hour ago, my attorney has not heard back from the petitioner on the certified letter. I believe this has been going on about 10 months, so at this point, we, you know, we're going to challenge this, due to the land dispute on both properties. All of the, as you know, it's all non-conforming locks, and this is a serious issue for us.
Did you have your lands surveyed?
Didn't.
He said he did.
Mr. Flaherty.
That's not Mr. Flaherty, he's, that's his girlfriend Julie Flaherty. His name is Michael Kylie.
Okay, Mr. Kylie, I apologize. Mr. Kylie.
My name is Michael Kylie, as I disclosed in the residence left, you can see from Ms. Kuzi's response, that obviously there's contention here.
You're at number 743?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, in terms of what's being proposed, it's, they're not doing any work closer to your structure, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
It's, it's on the other side of the property, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have anything else?
I'd just like to go on notice that at this time, while this, while this is working its way through, that we're opposed to this.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, the board is not in a position to adjudicate a land dispute, so I appreciate Mr. Kylie bringing that to the board's attention, but we're not in any position to say who's right and who's wrong, so you should avoid any consideration of that issue.
I agree. Okay. So, I'm gonna make a motion to close 22-115, 747 Ocean Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Steve Feeny, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Reverend's aye.
All right, and I will move, I'll move that the board grant a special permit request for a special, uh, subject to the conditions, this project will require a building permit, a final as-built, a certificate of occupancy, based on the finding that the proposed reconstruction work as per plan, last revised 9/7/22, will be substantially more, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, the existing non-conforming home at 747 Ocean Street, and based on the finding that the applicant has demonstrated that they meet all of the other requirements in the Section 1012 of the bylaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, hold on, it's agreed all 1 to 10 up there, everyone in agreement?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree. All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Steve Feeny, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Reverend's aye.
Thank you. So now, we're on to 40 Lone Street. Do we have someone here for this?
Probably on Zoom, I believe.
What's that?
Probably on Zoom.
It's 40 Lone Street here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, hold on. This project is located in the I-1 district. This is a request to add additional equipment to existing communications tower. Our, oh, Brian, Brian, consistently reading the wrong information. 22-116 Dish Wireless LLC, the petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with 3051012 of the site plan approval, in accordance with 3051202 of the Marshfield Municipal Code, to place an equipment with existing multi-user carrier equipment building and attached antennas to the tower on the property located at, property, did you hear that word? Located at 40 Lone Street, which is further identified in the assessors' maps as being on parcel C100101C, and is located in the I-1 zoning district. Name and address for the record.
Yes, Jim Ball, Ariony, Penn Arthur Road, up in Wakefield.
Go ahead.
So, this file says an FCC licensed carrier building out a network in 2023 to compete with the other carriers, Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile, and so they're, right now, they're just permitting many sites throughout Eastern Mass, and they'll start construction later in 2023. We're taking the space that MetroPCS, which merged with T-Mobile, vacated a few years ago, and there's no change to the site whatsoever, just the attachment of the antennas and the placement of the radio equipment inside the multi-user building at the base of the tower.
Andrew, you have anything on this, other than your notes?
Nope.
Okay. Bob?
Very straightforward. This is what we want people to do. We want them to locate on existing towers and existing spaces, so this meets the requirements of Section 1112, which requires a special permit whenever time you're amending a wireless facility, but this is exactly what we hope everybody would do, go where you already got a tower.
Anything from the board?
Nope.
Anything from the online audience? Seeing that there's none, make a motion to close 22-116 Dish Wireless LLC, 40 Lone Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Steve Feeny, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Reverend's aye.
So, I move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's request for a special permit and site plan approval, subject to the conditions, they don't need anything, right, basic, based on a finding proposed on the work. What's the, Andrew, you got the date on, anyone got the date on that plan that they can read?
Looks like August 4th, 2022.
August 4th, 2022, and meet all the requirements in the Section 1012 of the bylaw.
Brian.
As-built.
Yeah, as-built, and we typically require a removal bond. It shouldn't be that much money.
Right.
It's usually 1.25 times the cost of removal of the equipment and the thing, but they're not removing the whole tower, it's just components, so they can work that out with Andrew.
Andrew.
I'd be fine with.
Whatever they say the cost is.
Okay, so the conditions are an as-built, removal bond of the amount, 1.25 cost of the remove, of the.
Of the equipment removal.
Equipment removal. All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Steve Feeny, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Reverend's aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have 1067 Union Street here?
Yeah, it'll be on Zoom.
What's that?
Yeah.
All right, hold on. 22-117 Cordelia J. Tellman, the petitioner is seeking a special court, permit in accordance with 3051103 of the Marshfield Municipal Code, to allow fill in excess of 500 cubic yards and within the area greater than 10,000 square feet to be brought to the site for the construction of a new 125-foot-by-72-foot indoor riding arena accessory, accessory structure to the property located at 1067 Union Street, which is further identified on the assessors' maps as being parcel B170112A, and is located in the R1 zoning district. Go ahead.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Dana Altavelli, I'm here with Jill Coleman, she's the owner of the property at 1067 Union Street. The project is located on the left-hand side of Union Street, approximately 175 feet from the intersection of Island Street, and it's located within the R1 residential role zoning district. The property consists of one parcel with approximately 5.9 acres of land. Currently, it is an existing single-family block with a pool, along with several barns, fenced-in paddocks, and other associated equestrian features on the property. The property generally slopes from south to north of the property, and there are wetland resource areas, as you can see, look at the blue area, up toward Union Street, and that portion of the property on the east side of the property, with the associated buffers and green around it. The applicant is proposing to construct a new 72-foot-wide by 125-foot-long riding area to the north of the existing driveway. Of course, this will be brought into the riding area via the existing driveway of several nearby barns. They're already constructing, constructing the arena at the, or a similar elevation to the driveway in front of that closest barn to the proposed arena. The elevation of the grade below the arena will have to be flattened and raised in that area. In accordance with Section 305-11.03, a special permit is required to allow the filling of the property in accordance with the zoning bylaws. There's no proposed change in use as part of this proposal. The currently on site, there are grazing gardens with several barns, and there are the accessory structures on the property with the horses themselves, so there's no change in use there. Beering will be the minimum setback distance with the property line, and it's, as I mentioned, it's a consistent use with the current use on the property. As such, the proposed project will not be detrimental or objectionable to the neighborhood than the existing use and structures on the property, and the project will preserve the residential role for the deal with the neighborhood, which currently has several other agricultural uses nearby. We have proposed a continuous line of erosion control, which is shown in red, down drainage and waterwork. This will control all drain from the water area during the construction period, and in the long term, we have proposed a sub-circuit infiltration. And in long term, we have proposed, um, a subsurface infiltration system below the arena itself and that'll intercept, um, all roof runoff, which will be directed through the roof drain system into the subsurface infiltration system. We've also incorporated existing catch bases, which is kind of towards the bottom of the stream, which is in the middle of the existing driveway, which will be time added to the proposed, uh, drainage system, which will, uh, help with some of the erosion that happens on the edge of the driveway. Additionally, as a, a further measure to help infiltrate some of the runoff in the driveway, we have proposed a 2.5-foot wide, um, infiltration trench on the down grating edge of the driveway as a routine. The maximum depth of fill for the project is approximately eight or eight and a half feet along the northerly edge of the barn itself. No portion of the fill will exceed, uh, 10 feet as required. Uh, the open areas outside of the structures will be treated with a minimum of four inches of lube or riprap on the steeper slopes, as you can see. And, um, exterior lighting for the arena will be, um, downward facing shielded lighting, uh, just over the barn door on the west of the side of the, the barn itself. I think that's pretty much it, if you have any questions, if you have any answers?
Uh, anyone have any questions? Andrew, you have anything other than street?
Uh, nope, they just, they need a building permit, obviously, for the arena and the fact that they're, they're gonna do retaining walls over four feet of, uh, of, uh.
Okay.
Bob?
No issues.
Anything from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing that there's none, I'll move that we close 22-117 Cordelia J. Tallman, 1067 Union Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Reverend Z, aye.
Um, and I'll make a motion to, I move that the board vote to grant special permit, subject to the conditions, project will require a building permit, um, uh, the arena will require a building permit, final as-built certificate of occupancy, and we all agree, Andrew, can you put up the 1 to 10?
Uh, Brian, on this one, the statute requires, uh, approvals from the selectmen, DEP, and mass DOT.
All right, so.
I think there's some type of a truck ban on Union Street, they'll have to figure that out.
All right, so those conditions to be added, the approval from the selectmen, DEP, and who?
Yeah.
Who else, selectmen, DEP, and?
Selectmen, DEP, and Department of Transportation.
Department of DOT.
Uh, I, I don't, it's just what the stat, it's the bylaw says.
Okay.
Is the truck ban Union Street or the Union Street Bridge? I thought it was Pine Street and the Union Street.
No, I think it's Union Street.
All of Union?
Yeah, I, so, it's not just, uh, it's not the bridge.
Maybe if they come in on Highland and then just wheelbarrow it over.
It, it honestly, it's right at the intersection of Highland and Union.
Yeah, right.
I, I, I mean, I think you're allowed to do it because there's no other way to get the material there.
Right, there's no, the ban is on, is through traffic, right?
Yeah, I think it's through traffic.
It's not local work, works a lot.
No, but still the select, it requires some approval, the select, the bylaw requires select approval. The only time we've even dealt with this was before, was on the golf course.
Right.
It's the only other time we've dealt with this.
All right, well, um, so that's that, and,
so, to Mr. Spilcode, um, I move that the board, in accordance with 305, did I already say all that, Nancy, or? Mr. Spilcode, to allow fill in excess of 500 cubic yards within an area greater than 10,000 square feet to be brought by the site for the construction of new 125-foot, um, by 72-foot indoor arena, accessory structure of property located at 1067 Ocean Street, based on the finding that the applicant has submitted the required site plans and proposed filling in compliance with section 1103. Prior to commencement of any work, you must obtain other state and local permits, um, approvals, including limit, without limitation, board selectmen, Massachusetts Department of Violent Mental Protection, and the DOT.
Brian, I believe there's somebody online that wants to speak.
Oh, who's online, there's no person?
Jill?
Jill, do you have something to say?
Uh, no, sir, I do not.
Okay, um, so, do I have a second? Oh, we all agreed with, um, special permit conditions?
Yes.
Everybody, yeah? Um, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Reverend Z, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, we have, happy Thanksgiving, 22-118 Darrell Waymeyer. Is someone here for that? The petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with 305-1012 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to construct a 30-foot by 12-foot dormer in the rear of the dwelling to match the existing dormer on the front of the property located at 37 Farragut Street, which is further identified assessors' maps as being parcel L10-03-05 located R3 zoning district. Is anyone here for this?
I mean, this, this is like a straightforward thing, it's too bad he's not here.
Yeah, um, Brian, honestly, if, if I could, I'll, I'll present.
Yeah, put it up there.
This was a result of a, uh, a stop work order, um, they had a permit to do work in the house. They ended up adding this dormer during construction, they didn't realize they would need ZVA. So, it was the result of a stop work order, um, and that's basically what it is, is they had to stop and they had to apply for a ZVA special permit. Once they applied, they did allow them to continue on at their own risk, um, because they had already pretty much substantially completed, uh, the project as far as the rough frame, you know, was, uh, ready to be inspected. So, they are kind of asking for, uh, after the fact relief here, as it is a, um, non-conforming lot, a non-conforming structure in that it's got a, a side setback that's non-conforming and a rear setback, or I'm sorry, a front setback that's non-conforming, but they didn't expand the footprint and they just added, uh, a couple, this little dormer out the back that matches the front dormer.
Okay, and it's all within the footprint, right, so?
It is.
Okay. All right, um, any questions on this from anybody? The audience? Seeing that there's none, I move to close 22-118 Darrell Waymeyer, 37 Farragut Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Reverend Z, aye.
I move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's request for a special permit, subject to the conditions. Uh, this project has a building permit and will require a certificate of occupancy, um, plot plan. Based on the finding that the proposed construction, reconstruction, as per plan, last revised, you got a date on that, Andrew?
You could use the, you could almost use the.
Eight six, oh.
You could use the, like, the renderings, the architectural plans, because that really shows it.
10/26/2022?
10/26/2022, and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming home at 37 Farragut, based on a finding that the applicant has demonstrated that they meet all the requirements of section 1012 of the bylaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Reverend Z, aye.
All right, so we have continued, uh, is it 22-102? Oh, yeah, so I just, I don't have to read that, and it's already been written. So, we're gonna vote to extend 22-102 James and Ellis Cavello, 34 Park Street, um, to December 13th, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Reverend Z, aye.
All right, and everything else is just?
Two other things, just other business.
Oh, other business? So, is, we don't, I don't have to say.
Mike Westdort is here.
Yeah, those other two people were continued to the 12/13. Other business, we have 1955 Health Circle Incorporated. Petitioner is seeking, requesting a six-month extension on a special permit and site plan approval that was granted November 10th, 2020, meeting and stamped in clerk's office, November 24th, 2020, to complete construction on the dispensary. Yep.
Yeah, basically, Mike Westdort, um, I own Health Circle, we have a dispensary in Rockland, um, a grow that's about 90% done. Uh, just need an extension on a special permit for 21 Commerce Row, not 21, sorry, 120 Enterprise Drive. Didn't get the building when originally planned because of other issues, I'm not sure if you're aware of, so I haven't had the whole window to build it out, so I just need a little more time. Six months should be fine, it should be completed by then.
When did you acquire the property?
Probably March.
March of 2022?
Yeah.
And in six months, what is that, that's, uh, May?
No, so it's, um.
Six months from November, is that May?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you, you anticipate you'll be done by May of 2023?
Yeah, their only, first seen problem I have, and the only reason I know this is because of my dispensary in Rockland and we're building out a grow, I have a problem accessing cameras. The state has so many cameras that are required, like, the front of my house in Rockland for the dispensary has like 80 cameras, the back of my house has quite a few, there's some snake eye cameras that have four eyes in the one camera. I'm having a hard time, but assuming I got those, I have no issues.
Can, I, I don't, I have no knowledge of any of this, so?
Yeah.
I'm not challenging, I'm just asking, so you cannot open?
Without the cameras, yeah.
Without having all of the cameras in place?
Correct. So, once I complete construction, get a C of O, I then have to go to the CCC, which is a Cannabis Control Commission, then they're gonna come out and expect it, then they'll go have a meeting, assuming I have no deficiencies, which you're always gonna have one or two.
I'm sorry to interrupt, for our purposes, is the C of O sufficient for the special permit? Or do we need, does the special permit expire if he doesn't have his state approvals?
If he constructs this in accordance with the plan, he, when he gets a CO, he's met his requirements with us.
Okay, so we don't care as much about the cameras, as long as you have your C of O.
Right, which I guess I can get a C of O from you guys without the cameras, because you, you.
You can get that from me, Andrew, as soon as you built it.
I'll tell you how I, how I worked it with, um, the other dispensary was essentially they completed their building permit to satisfaction, uh, of all town, um, requirements, so they were issued a temporary, um, certificate of occupancy, which they were able to submit to the Cannabis Control Commission to prove that they had met all the local requirements, and then they were issued their final, um, uh, approval, and that's, and that's when they got, like, the official certificate of occupancy, meaning that they had met every single requirement, including the Cannabis Control Commission, and now they can get in there and operate and open up, but the temporary occupancy certificate, it's, it's essentially a certificate of occupancy with a letter that conditions its temporary use, so they can submit that to the Cannabis Control Commission and get one step ahead. And that is what we used with the other dispensary to kind of get them to that point where they can go and get the final approvals from the state.
That works for me.
So, can I ask?
It saved me time.
We gave you this permit in November of 24th, 2020.
Yeah.
We visited the building out there, you're saying you just acquired the building in March?
Yeah, so, I'm not sure if you know, Rick built another building, and they had an issue with the facade of the building, so he didn't move out of the building. Like, I don't own it, I rented from him.
The one with the building where the front collapsed on the building?
So, this is why we're here, so we're here because of that?
I couldn't start, because he couldn't move out.
All right.
So, we're all, we're, I'm over a year behind, so in the meantime, I started building out the grow in Rockland. So, it was supposed to be build the dispensary, Rockland, dispensary, Marshfield, grow and back. So, then, because we, I had no idea when I was taking over the building, we started building out the grow in Rockland.
Okay. I, that wasn't clear, and now, did you change the, um, interior design or any of the design?
Yeah, so, um, they came to the building today.
I went out there the other day and looked at it.
So, originally, it was on the side, and remember, we had the whole issue with the, people wanted a big fence, little fence, whatever, and they didn't want deliver, deliveries to be where the front entrance was? So, we basically pivoted the whole thing, so now the entrance, instead of being on the side, is on the front, the deliveries can come in the side, people come in the front, so they're not walking from the brewery to my prop, well, I mean, they still can't.
So, do we need this updated, Bob?
The building per, the plans for the building permit all have the updated information.
This is all interior changes?
Yes.
Okay, because if there's exterior changes, you'd probably need to update your site plan.
No, there's.
The only, the only changes that it made to the exterior are exits, but now they're keeping, they have, now they're keeping the established exits that were already there, they're not adding any additional ones or closing up any existing ones, which was what was proposed on the initial plan.
So, still, everything looks the same, it's just?
So, every, basically, the building's gonna stay on the exterior the same as it already was. What was approved was to modify it and close up some exits and, and, and create some new entrances, and now they're gonna utilize the existing setup and not eliminate, like, the, the bay in the back and, and, and other things. Am I correct about that, Michael?
Yeah.
I wasn't aware that you had the problem getting into the building, I was wondering what was going on over there.
Yeah, this could, Mike, the selectmen have been kind of asking about this, so.
Okay.
I don't know why we weren't aware of it, but.
Well, I don't want to say anything, because it's not my building, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but you could, the, we, it looks like it was just sitting there, not doing anything, so.
No, in my, in, my apologies for that, but no, we're ready to go, they were in there today taking pictures.
I saw, I was, um, I stopped, I saw guys working there last week.
Yeah.
Um, and I spoke to them, and Andrew and, uh.
Is this, you get this done in six months, this will be done?
Should be able to, I can't promise I'll be inspected with the CCC, but as far as you guys are concerned, I should be done in six months.
Okay, um, do we have anything else from the board?
What are we, what are we looking at, Andrew?
This is what delayed them right here. You see that?
The front of the whole building. The front of the building fell.
It fell, it fell off.
Crushed a van.
You know, so they had a major delay, major structural thing, OSHA, everything. They were delayed a year on this project, which was, you know, they had to move from this building, which Health Circle was gonna occupy, into this building, and because of this failure, it kind of delayed the whole process for Health Circle.
Okay, so we just weren't aware of that, all right, and now we are, so. All right, um, I don't, personally, I don't have a problem moving this to six months, is anyone, everyone okay with that?
No, I'm good.
All right, so what kind of a motion do I make, motion to extend?
Move to grant the six-month extension of the special permit.
Move to grant the six-month extension of the special permit and the site, site plan approval, it doesn't, doesn't need it. Just grant the extension of the, um, special permit.
Yeah, so the six months will be from November 24th.
Right, um, so when is that?
May 24th.
Does it work out, May 24th of 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Steve Feeny, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye, to the extent that I can vote?
Yeah, you can. It's just an extension. All right, thank you.
And I apologize, I thought everybody in town knew about the other thing, so I was like trying to keep it quiet.
Everybody knew about the building, but I didn't know how it impacted you.
Oh, okay, yeah, my, my apologies.
Thank you, guys.
All right, happy Thanksgiving. Do, anything else?
We'll, we'll take approval of minutes, just this one, sorry.
Larry will fire that up. We will now hear from the official clerk.
Just vote, motion to approve.
Motion to approve minutes from September 19th, 2020, which?
Good luck.
9/19/19.
9/19/19. Thanks. Happy Thanksgiving, Bob. Do I have a second?
Second.
Keane, second.
All of the favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye?
Reverend Z, aye.
Is that it?
That's it, we're done.
Motion to adjourn.
It's time for your Thanksgiving break.
Yep, motion to, so, all in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
All right. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanks, everybody, happy Thanksgiving.